Looks like we don't have any electronic participation requests. As I told you, as I know. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? There's a pledge of allegiance, Mr. Connor. You want to say something?
Yes, I wanted to say something before. As part of the pledge of allegiance. Recognizing today as Veterans Day. And I want to thank all veterans to make sure that we, if you know any, to thank them for their service and thank those that are serving now for their great service to this great country. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Connor. Happy Veterans Day to all those who serve. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Alene?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The chair commented, I just had one statement. I know I sent an email and I'm snitching on the person on my left and the person on my right. I sent you all an email today that this year I hope we'll have a target of minimum $20 for every hourly employee and minimum $52,000 for every. So that was not my idea. It was coming from the both sides of the aisle sitting beside me. So I want to not... Thank you, Dr. Majet, for caring. For LCS personnel for just suggesting that it may not be feasible. It may be feasible, we'll work it out. But thank you for the advocacy for the members of our family.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next one is student representative, Dr. Majet.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'm very, very excited to welcome my two representatives here tonight. Claire Ramsey from EC Glass High School and Malia Webb from Heritage High School, who both have presentations for you all. All right, we'll start with you, Ms. Claire.
With athletics. The Hilltoppers defeated Brookville this past Friday with a victory of 23 to 20. Additionally, the EC Glass Varsity volleyball team won their game against Salem this past Wednesday with a score of 3 to 0 in the regional quarterfinal. Also on Thursday, JV football played at Brookville. The fall season is going well with the varsity football team having a record of 5 to 5 and varsity volleyball has an amazing record of 16 to 5. A new program at Glass is providing the opportunity for disabled students to play basketball competitively this year. For the first time, EC Glass is participating in the Medford League, a team that expands access to sports for special education students. On October 9th, the team had their first home game against Brookville High School. EC Glass won the inaugural home game with a score of 57 to 32 against Brookville. This season, the league will compete in a total of six games against Alta Vista Combined School, Brookville High School, and Russburg High School. This is all leading up to the regional playoffs in November. EC Glass organizations such as the Beacon of Hope, LEA, SCA, GSA, National Honor Society, and Lynchburg Students' Rise are collaborating in a food and clothing drive for the Thanksgiving season. All donated items will go to Parkview Community Mission. EC Glass Student Council has created a new hoodie design to give back to the community for this holiday season. 25% of the profits from the hoodie sales will be donated back into the community through Share Greater Lynchburg. And the amazing graphics you see on the screen were created by our SCA Director of Public Relations, Juliette Dop. The first of the month, EC Glass cheerleading hosted a trunk or treat event in the EC Glass student parking lot. Many clubs gathered together to decorate their chosen theme, to decorate vehicles based on their chosen theme, and children from the community got to come and trick or treat. EC Glass SCA was inside-out themed. At the Virginia Theater Competition... I'm sorry, Virginia Theater Association, EC Glass Theater students competed in late October. EC Glass was named one of the top competitors for their performance Failure: A Love Story, which earned them a spot in the Southeastern Theater Conference. EC Glass was also awarded the following: Best Costumes, Best Ensemble, First Place in High School Monologue Competition by 9th Grader Rebecca Spitzer, Honorable Mention in Scenic Design by 12th Grader V. McAndrew, and Honorable Mention in Props, 12th Grader Weston England.
Very nice.
The EC Glass marching band also had a big win as they won the Group 3 State Championship at the Virginia Marching Band Cooperative on October 25th.
Very nice.
The band also placed 7th overall at the Commonwealth Cup in the performance entitled "De Vol." Virginia College Application Week, EC Glass High School students and Heritage High School students got the chance to apply and be accepted on-site to Virginia colleges and universities free of charge. Students received guidance on completing applications, finding scholarships, and financial aid. This event was sponsored by Lynchburg Beacon of Hope. At Lincoln Middle School, 7th Grader Annie Richards was voted Artsonia's National Artist of the Week in September. Her piece was titled "Hot Air Balloon Stained Glass," and the piece received more than 600 votes, earning a first-place spot. Also at Lincoln Middle School, 7th graders explored career pathways in late October as part of the Worlds of Opportunity Career Expo. The event was hosted by Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance at Central Virginia Community College. The students had the opportunity to operate an excavator, use medical tools, experiment with static electricity, and practice hands-on construction techniques. Also at Lincoln Middle School, the Lincoln Middle School Girls and Boys Cross Country Teams both won their Seminole District Championship, and they're the city champions. At RS Payne Elementary School, it was celebrated the 100th anniversary of the building. Since 1925, the building has stood as a landmark in Lynchburg, which originally served as the Robert E. Lee Junior High School. RS Payne serves more than 400 students and also houses the Gifted Opportunities or GO Center. Also at RS Payne, students in Lynchburg got a hands-on lesson in aviation on Monday as Central One helicopter touched down at RS Payne Elementary School. The event was part of the school's "Soar Into Your Future: Aeronautics Career Day," and students met Central's Fight Crew and Liberty University Aeronautics students, which helped them learn about teamwork and technology behind emergency responses in aviation. Thank you.
Very nice, Claire.
November pioneers in action. Okay, our pioneers outside the classroom. This highlights a few of our moments where our pioneers have showed school spirit just beyond the classroom. On the left, we have a picture from Senior Sunrise, a few events where seniors gather early in the morning to celebrate their final years together. And on the right, you can see students at the tailgate event cheering on our football team and showing support to the players. Pioneers and the community. On September 19th, Lynchburg City Schools started their first student-run food truck, the Lynchburg Express. High school students will run the truck and learn about cooking, business, and money skills. Middle school students can also get involved. The truck is like a mobile classroom, helping students get real-world experience and prepare for future jobs. Our seniors have been preparing for their next steps after high school during the Virginia College Application Week. You can see students attending SAT prep and getting ready for college. Senior Night, where students and families received guidance on the college application process. These events help our students feel more confident and prepared as they take important steps towards their future goals. Pioneers showing school spirit. This slide highlights how our pioneers have been showing their school spirit throughout the year. Students participate in Creative Spirit Week activities and came out full force to cheer on the football team. They brought amazing energy to pep rallies and student events, and it's great to see so much pride and excitement in our pioneer community. Our... Oh, I'm not sure why it looks like that on there. But for our fall sports, we have volleyball and football. Cross-country and competition cheer weren't made very clear. Volleyball, they fell 3 to 1 to Lakeland Cavaliers, and Heritage's defeat dropped their score down to 122, and that's how they ended their season. Football is a 9 to 1 Seminole District champions and number-one seed in regional playoffs.
Very nice. Good job.
Our theater, they were the finalist in the Virginia Theater Association. They were top-six with multiple acting awards and overall performance awards. Paige Nalen, Coleman Bradner, and Olivia Gallion from Heritage High School all received acting awards. They also, as a whole, received Best Ensemble and Best Set Design. Recently, they received top-two at district's competition, and they'll be moving forward to regionals at Stanton this Saturday. The band recently earned all-ones at their district assessment, and at the Basset Marching Band Competition, the ensemble achieved a fourth-place overall finish and beat Heritage's previous score, which had remained unbeaten for years.
Very good.
And a win for the pioneers. The pioneers celebrate a triumphant win over EC Glass in the annual Jug Bowl, bringing the jug back home. And I'm not sure why it looks like that either. On my screen, sorry, it's RS Payne's. Elementary celebrates their milestone this year, the 100th anniversary of the building it now calls home. And since 1922, the building at 1201 Floyd Street has stood as a landmark in Virginia, and it was originally served as the Robert E. Lee Junior High School before becoming RS Payne Elementary. And Sandusky Middle School won the Lynchburg City Football Championship, defeating Lincoln Middle with a score of 58 to 0. The championship game was held at the Lynchburg City Stadium. Darryl Alexander was a key player, scoring four touchdowns in the championship game. And the Sandusky Middle School Spartans finished their season undefeated. Yes, that is my entire presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome. We'll be a productive year for you. Thank you very much for your service to the board. Next one is a closed meeting. Notice of closed meeting. The school board chair recommend the school board approve a motion to convene a closed meeting to discuss the following, as permitted by the Virginia Code 2.2-3711A19, "Discussion of Reports or Plans Related to Security of Any Governmental Facility, Building Structure, or Safety of Such Facility, Building, or Structure in Superintendent Devaluation."
Yes.
So is there a motion to approve that?
Motion.
There is second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Alene?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll go upstairs and we'll be right back.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll go upstairs and we'll be right back. That's it. Thank you. 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 That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Connor and Mrs. Lowery, second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll to come out?
Ms. Barron?
Yes.
Ms. Ali?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is certification. The board chair moves that the Lynchburg School Board certifies. Enclosed meeting just concluded. Nothing was discussed except for the matter or matters, number one specifically identified in the motion to convene in a closed meeting, and two lawfully permitted to be so discussed under provisions of Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion. Is there a motion to certify the closed meeting?
Motion.
Mrs. Lowery, the second.
Second.
Mr. Pope, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is public comment. Mr. Connor?
We didn't have anybody sign up for public comments on today.
Thank you. Next is consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Connor, Mrs. Lowery, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next one is financial reports. Dr. Majet.
All right. I'll turn over Ms. Jamie's for monthly financial report.
Thanks. Good evening Chairman Gupta, members of the school board, and Dr. Majet. I'll be brief in my comments tonight on this chilly evening. You have before you the October 31st 2025 month end financials. As of October, that marks the 33.3% of the fiscal year passing. The percent of revenues collected versus our original appropriation sits at 25.01%. The amount of expenditures versus the original appropriation is 29.66% year-to-date. And our total expenditures that are inclusive of encumbrances, which are expenditures we expect to process, equates to 88.56%. There are no new variances, no new notable variances on this month's report from prior reports that we have not already discussed. However, October of last fiscal year, we had expended 27.15% year-to-date, which is in line with our current expenses that you are reviewing this evening. So our statement of revenue, the total amount of revenue received year-to-date is $29,798,371.06. Of the total state revenues that we've, of the total revenues that we've collected, states equates to 26.83%, federal equates to 23.58%, and local revenue equates to 21.70%. We have received miscellaneous charges and miscellaneous charges for services to the tune of 31.71% and 34.50%, respectively. Our monthly financial summaries, the third report that you received, as of October, LCS has a year-to-date balance in insurance of negative $763,595.77. As a reminder, our health insurance summary is subject to change, that fund balance is subject to change based on the FY 2025 audit completion, which is a great segue to my other informational items. The audit update, the finance department has submitted all requested audit items to Brown Edwards who serve as our auditors. We are waiting on their final review of all of that documentation before we can have a true number to append to our insurance. And then we are, my final item, we are working through our final week of open enrollment for benefits for our staff. So that concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
So when do you expect the audit to be completed?
So we have given them everything. We are, they have to work with the city on their piece. And so as soon as they finalize the city's piece and include our piece into the city's piece, they'll get it back to us. I'm hoping maybe late November, early December, delivery date of the final polished document.
The reason I'm asking because that will reset our insurance numbers.
Yes, sir. We will have a truer number of what we ended up with last year, once they have calculated all that. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, sir. Sure thing.
Next one is new business, change order request. Mr. DePaul and Dr. Majet comes to finance committee.
I'm going to, if it's okay with Mr. DePaul, I was going to turn it over to Mr. Marshall to give a lead-in for Mr. Eubank's presentation.
Absolutely. So at our most recent Finance and Facility Committee meeting, Mr. Jordan Eubank, who is our construction project manager, he brought forward a change order request for the access control project. Following his brief presentation, I do ask that there be a motion to approve this request.
Make a motion to approve the request.
All right. So as Travis said, I'm here to talk about the access control upgrade. Change order, this change order will allow us to move into the Phase Two schools that are listed on the summary document that I believe all of you have. The reason that we are talking about it at this meeting is because the change order amount is greater than 25% of the total contract value. So it does have to be approved at this meeting. So I guess if there's any questions, let me know. Happy to answer. If not.
If it's more than that, has City Council given us that money? Or is it coming from another entity?
I think what it is a change, I believe the original budget was $4,638,000.
That's correct.
And the change is resulting in a contract amount of $4,572,000. So we're actually spending a little less than what was originally appropriated.
All right.
Yep. Is there a motion to, it comes through a committee, so it doesn't require a second. Mr. DePaul already made a motion, right? Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is Crime Stoppers, also through Finance Committee, Mr. DePaul and Dr. Majet.
Like for Mr. Marshall, help us out with this.
Absolutely. So a few weeks ago, I was able to sit down and learn more about a program called Crime Stoppers. After meeting with Sergeant Gibson and her team, I feel confident this program would be a great fit for the Lynchburg City Schools, and am even more pleased to announce that it costs us nothing to implement this additional layer of safety and security in our schools. At the most recent Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, Sergeant Gibson gave a presentation on Crime Stoppers. I wanted to answer one of the questions that came up and note that this program can be implemented on the laptops. No use of cell phones required. Following the presentation from Sergeant Gibson, I would ask that there be a motion to approve this program within Lynchburg City Schools.
Welcome.
So how many of you have heard of Crime Stoppers? Okay. All right. Well, that's good. So Crime Stoppers, of course, is a tip line for people to call in about crime, things that they know, and they can remain anonymous, and then they can receive a reward and still remain anonymous. And what we would like to propose, this is a regional, we, Crime Stoppers, Central Virginia Crime Stoppers is regional. It's got seven different jurisdictions, all the way from Nelson County all the way down to Brookneal, Alta Vista, Campbell County. What we're proposing is that we bring it into the city schools so that we can allow our students and teachers to provide tips on things that they see going on in the school that we don't want going on in the school. As Mr. Marshall said during the last committee meeting, there was concern because the students do not have their cell phones from first bell to last bell. And so he was able to work with IT and get it so that they can put it onto the laptop so they can do the tips through that. They can also use their cellphone, they can use an app, and they can text it. So there's multiple ways.
Yep. I think, I think it's really important to note that while they're in school, they will not be using their cell phones to do this, that it would be through the laptop. And the IT department is ready to get started on getting that on everybody's devices.
And just so you guys know that the information comes in, I actually receive it on my phone, every tip that comes in, and then we're responsible for sending it to where it needs to go, whether it needs to go to Campbell County or whether it needs to go into our school system. This would be the first school system in our region to do it. We wanted to give it a trial run here before we offer it to our others. Should something come in that is not criminal in nature, we would just forward that to our SROs. Our SROs would then get with their principals, their staff, and that would be handled that way.
Questions?
Just a statement, just a comment. This is coming in from committee. We could have just gone in and explained it to you, but I don't think with this or the previous motion that we could have done as good a job as, as the Crime Stoppers and the other fellow, the other fellow is doing. Yes. So this was, this was, the committee wanted to make sure that the full board heard and was aware of this because it's such a great program. We support it tremendously as a committee. And that was really just for information purposes. I don't think anyone in the committee could have done as good a job as you have done. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Is there a, committee makes a motion to approve?
Yes, committee brings it forth, so it's just a vote.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is legislative priorities. Who is on LSC? I know Mr. Gilley is not there. Leave it to Dr. Majet to take the baton. For legislative priorities, they're coming from the city council. They discuss these priorities. I don't think we have done it on the school side yet, and the clock is running pretty fast. So Dr. Majet, go ahead. The floor is yours.
Okay. All right. Well, good evening again. As you see in your board docs, these are the Lynchburg City Council legislative agenda. You'll see where, under lifelong learning, those are the ones that pertain directly to our K-12 environment. And then you see others about public safety, from quality of life to economic development and infrastructure. And while I say the first group impacts K-12, all of the things within the community as always impact us. We're a part of the greater community. So I wanted to, well, I'd like to put these out here before you, for you to discuss if you all feel like there are certain components that you want to support, if you want to support the entire legislative agenda in alignment with the city. But it's really open for discussion, any action that you would like to take from there. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So the transitional, because we've been trying to get transitional classes. So would this be at every school?
I think the premise, I had an opportunity to meet with the county administrators, excuse me, city administrators assistant, and we had an opportunity to sort of talk through these. And my understanding was these, a lot of these were to provide an extra layer of support to what we already have in place. So we recognize we have the pre-K to three and four-year-old program. And my understanding with this was looking, hey, how can we provide some extra layer of support? So these are the legislative priorities. We're not sure what will carry.
So you're not, so if a child finishes pre-K four, but they're not quite ready for kindergarten, then what happens?
So I can't speak to that intent. I don't think, as I read this, that that's the intent of this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. To me, as I read it, and my discussion with them is that this would be something that would just sort of layer on what we already have. But it would not be that in-between that you and I have talked about.
Yes.
Hey, if you're not ready for kindergarten.
Yes. Okay.
Yes, ma'am. That's a great question. No, ma'am. I don't think that's the premise.
Yeah, okay.
Somebody has to carry this as a legislation on the House or the Senate side in Richmond.
Yes, sir.
And it's vetted through different committees and subcommittees. Then the whole chamber, both chambers have to approve it for it to become the law.
Yes, sir.
Right now, this is our wish list.
Yes.
On the city side. And the question is, school, should we endorse that wish list or we want to amend that wish list, right? That's what you're asking.
Yes, sir.
I, I have just a few notes. I mean, I'm heavily in favor of continuing to bolster our comprehensive pre-K and transitional kindergarten. I think that's, as Ms. Lowery mentioned before, that is where the achievement gap starts, you know, as we can, we can address those issues. So I'm big on that. The workforce development program, big on that. I would love to just hear some conversation from board members. I have some thoughts about school choice and that, and how that plays in as we sit on the public, you know, the city schools board, that I'm a little bit leery of. And I can make my comments first if you'd like, but I'd really like to open up and just hear what people's thoughts are in general, sitting in the chair you're sitting in, on school choice as a legislative priority.
Now, this school choice you're talking about is for?
They're specifically talking about like a voucher system is what it looks like to me.
Like a charter school or something?
No. I mean, a charter school is part of a school choice initiative, but not part of this one. And the way, the way it's written, it's talking about vouchers. The money follows the kid wherever they go.
Yes, yes.
And so I have some issues with that particular, not, not school choice as a whole. And I will say, in some regards, it doesn't matter because I think that LCS will be the number one choice anyway. We're going to move that direction. But there are some things I think are worth considering. And again, just would love to hear some just opinions, ideas, thoughts about what's presented here in terms of the voucher system.
Well, for me, I think a parent should always have their choice. I don't think you should force a parent to send their kid. You know, the parents should, they're the ones raising them, so they should have a choice where the children.
So they do have a choice. You can, you can send your kid to private.
Yes, exactly. Exactly.
So, so that's, that's not the issue. It's the idea of money following students to subsidize putting your student in a private school versus putting them in a public school, things like that. And I guess I can just kind of speak to my own. Obviously, all my boys are in public school, and they'll continue to go to public school. We believe in the public school system. And I'm not opposed to school choice as a whole. I mean, there's some models I think that are okay, but there is sort of this sentiment of an illusion of choice when it comes to a voucher system, because there's going to be a certain demographic that doesn't matter how much money you give unless you're paying full tuition, which none of these systems do. There's some families that are just not going to have that choice, period. And so what you're ending up with in a lot of cases is some of our most vulnerable students and vulnerable families left with less funding in the public school system to be able to accomplish educating these students. And I struggle with that. I'm not saying we should, like, if not everybody can have it, nobody should have it. But that's where my struggle is. And so as a legislative priority, I, I struggle a little bit with that one. Just being honest.
I think what we could do is if there is a consensus, we can go priority, one priority at a time. And maybe there's a motion from the floor, we approve that priority and move to the next one. How about that? Right? That way, everybody's voice is counted and accounted, instead of, you know, clubbing it all. Is that reasonable?
All of them are just the ones that directly, the first four.
Education ones.
Education, okay.
Right? We can go one at a time and then look at that. So the first one is comprehensive pre-K and transitional kindergarten. Is there a consensus to move forward? Is there a motion to approve and put that as part of legislative priorities?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Is there a second? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for comprehensive pre-K and transitional kindergarten?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next one is full implementation and enhancement of Virginia Literacy Act. Is there a consensus to consider that, and then is a motion to move forward?
I consider we're doing that.
Just making sure I understand this, this is saying, because a lot of what is in the Literacy Act is unfunded mandates. Is this saying fully funded mandated items in there? Is that what, the way I'm reading it?
That's what I understood.
Yeah.
Carrying it on through middle school and high school, not just.
But funding it. A lot of times, they'll throw something new on the school system and say, do this.
You gotta figure out a way to fund it.
Figure out a way to pay for it. So long as they were fully funded, then.
SOQ faculty, they give us 3% raise, but non-SOQ, we gotta figure out this area. It's an unfunded mandate. So there are a lot of mandates like that come down from Richmond, and the city or school districts are holding the bag. So is there a motion to include full implementation and enhancement of Virginia Literacy Act as part of our?
To clarify, you're saying these are unfunded as-is, or they are funded?
This says it's funded.
This is to fund them.
There's a census that says the city further requests state support for.
Got you. Okay. That's what I was reading, but.
Is there a motion to include them in?
Motion.
Make them, yeah.
Mr. Poe? Poe, Mr. Poe, who's the second? Mrs. Lowery? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next one is reevaluation of the standards of quality funding formula. I think I jumped the gun on that one. Is there a consensus to include that as legislative priorities? Is there a motion? Go ahead.
I don't think, you know, sometimes these funding formulas lock us into some, some models that may not fit. I think we should continue to look at our budget on an annual basis.
See, the JLR last year proposed differential funding for students with IEP. And right now, it's the same funding for IEP and non-IEP student. And LCS has a.
Higher.
A higher number. I was going to use some more word. We got about 1,000 students with IEP. So if the differential funding comes, all the behavior staffing you need will have funding. Right now, it's unfunded.
It's unfunded, okay.
So the JLR committee report has not been adopted by the General Assembly. Look at the 2023. It's been two years. Two years we're holding the bag, and that, that needs to happen. The, the, the money needs to be appropriated on the differential funding. So LCS will come out ahead when that JLR study is adopted by the General Assembly.
Okay.
Is there a motion to include that as? Dr. Farmer, is there a second?
Second.
And Mrs. Lowery, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next one is school choice funding. You said you're, Mrs. Lowery?
Yeah, again, I'm not in favor of this particular model. Yeah, again, I'm not in favor of this particular model of school choice. Again, if there's an illusion of choice, it, it, I'm more in favor, because I don't want to just, you know, identify problems without solutions, but I'm more in favor of initiatives that, that are, like, we just talked, we just voted on. Fully fund the public school system, and let's make it as good as it can possibly be. And I believe that's possible. But if we have people now bailing and taking their kids elsewhere, it just makes it that much more difficult to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish, and for all students, including the most vulnerable in our city. So that's where I'm, I'm opposed to this.
Mrs. Lowry?
Well, I will repeat that for a high-quality system of free and appropriate education, it's under Article eight, section one of the Constitution of Virginia and Code of Virginia, two-two-point-one-dash-two-five-three. If all parents pay taxes, so if it's following the child, the parents have paid taxes into that. So whether they go to public, private, doesn't matter. They're here, they're paying taxes, so they should have that freedom to do that. The kids that come to us, we love on them and teach them. And the kids that go to private, the same's happening at their school. We also, though, serve kids that are, go to private schools, that, 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 private schools don't always serve kids with IEPs and things like that. So then we're still, so they're still coming to us. So to me, it's like the money's in the pot, and no matter where the kids go, the money's still in the pot.
Yeah, I mean...
That's just how I see it.
True. Two things, though. I, I think that what you're talking about is better accomplished with things like tax credits. So after the fact, you send your student to a public school or to a private school, you, you get certain tax credits on your taxes that accommodate for the money that you've spent and invested in the school system. I'm, I'm more for something like that. And I would just say, in general, just the, the research doesn't show very effective results from a school choice system. You look at states that implement it, I mean, it's a mixed bag. You can probably, you can find all the information you want to find, whatever conclusion you want to come to. But as a whole, I'm just not seeing anything that really makes this look like it's, it's actually a good thing for students overall. So...
And parents already do it.
They do.
I mean, I mean, they're already doing it, so...
They do, they do.
The issue is, they're not pulling that money away from our school system when a parent chooses to take, send their kid away, you know?
Yeah, I would say regardless, I'm speaking as a, as a, as a parent, I, I don't just want my kids to get a good education. I want the community I live in for kids to have a good education, because it helps the community. It makes the community better, makes better for all of us. So I'm not just, I, I think that's part of my struggle with a lot of these, these types of things, is, you know, we're really just, we, we really only care about our kids. And you should care about your kids first, right? That's your first priority. But we can't just keep going, well, those kids, we'll leave them over there, and our kids will, you know, give them a good education. Like, that, you, you pay now or you pay later. Like, I really think we want to do something that's ultimately going to benefit all of the students in our community, because they're going to be in our community for the next, however long. And so that's where I, I just, I struggle with that.
Mr. DePaul?
First, I really appreciate the way that you present, because I really respect what you're saying, and I agree with you. I'm, good portion of that. We are 122 out of 131, and parents deserve the right to have their money put where they see it for, in my opinion. So I'm in favor of this. I'm also in favor of tax credits and a better system.
Correct.
But at this point, this is probably one of the better things that we, we have available. So I, ma'am, I really appreciate, I love listening to you, I love talking with you. I love your point of view. I just, I, I'm in favor of this right here, and, and as much as I agree with what you're saying for the most part. So I just respect what you're saying.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, when people come up, this is a very violent issue, very, you know, very controversial. And as far as my concern would be, if it is not going to take monies away from the public institution, and parents have that choice, I, I think, again, I would agree that they should have that choice, to be able to utilize the money gain coming from their tax base. And some kids may benefit from that system, if it is not going to take away from what we're trying to accomplish here.
And that's what I'm saying, I, I, I think it does, right? Like, like, whether you've got three students on a bus, or 50 students on a bus, you're still paying for the bus, right? Either way. And there's certain expenses that go to running a school system. It doesn't really matter if we have these students, you know, this number of students or more students, when we pull that money out, we still have to find a way to pay those expenses, right? And that creates bottleneck, financial bottlenecks and issues. And so it does take from what we're trying to...
But here again, if we're talking about students again, you know, whether we want to see them do well, if they're able to function within the system, school system, yes, but that outside of that, it could benefit as well. Don't you think that would be a good thing?
Sure. I, I don't think that that's the, the only answer, though.
I want to, can I?
Mr. Connor?
Let's not have a debate.
I don't have any children in the school system. All my children are grown. But I pay a big property tax on my property.
Yeah, that's what I was going to...
I just wrote a huge check for my car tax that came in. I went and just went ahead and paid it, but it, it hurts. I don't have any kids in the school system, and I'm not the only, there's several thousand homeowners in the city of Lynchburg that are paying taxes that aren't directly benefiting. So the, the argument that the taxpayer is the only one that's benefiting from the school system is not true. I'm paying for a school system for kids that, for everybody else's kids. But I'm thinking, as a public school board member, I'm responsible to see the public schools operate at the highest level. It is not my responsibility to see the local private school or parochial school. That's not my responsibility. I chose to be on the public school board, and I want to see the funds necessary for a public school board to run at the highest levels possible. We need to bring our academics up to, to meet those goals, but as a public school board member, I feel like I want to support public schools.
Mr. Poe?
I, I was just wondering if, if we could, you know, table this one, this one vote, and, and allow the board to just really dive in and do more research.
So you're making a motion to table?
I'm making a motion to table.
Is there a second to...
No, second.
Second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Alene?
Yes.
Mr., Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next one is workforce development program?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to move forward?
Everybody's in favor of this.
Is there, do you have a motion to move forward?
I, I motion move forward.
Mr. Connor and Dr. Farmer, Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Alene?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Any other priorities the board would like to have?
The only other one I had written down was regarding the, it was on the health section. Sorry, I just put this down, closed it. Anyway, the, the initiative was about holding parents accountable for smoking marijuana in the car and things like that. And I don't have necessarily a strong opinion about that either way. I think I'm, I'm for it generally. But I would like for consideration, we've talked about this, Mr. Poe, and, and Mr. Connor and I, about cracking down on sales of THC vapes to, and THC products to minors, because we're seeing a lot of incidents, a lot of issues with, with minors having access to THC products. And somebody's got to hold somebody accountable for that. And I, I would love to see them address that in some sort of legislative measure.
So just to, two years ago, Delegate Walker had a legislation in front of the General Assembly on the House side on the same matter. Councilman Reed and I, myself, we were there in that subcommittee meeting, but that bill died in the subcommittee. Died in the subcommittee means it was tabled, and then never, never came up.
Do you know why?
General Assembly votes are not with comments. You go make public comment, and they say, motion to table it, motion to second, and they move on. They spend hardly, you know, a little bit of time on each bill which comes in front of them. So that's the, but that, nothing stops in bringing that bill again to the General Assembly, but I'm just providing the context of what happened last time that bill came in front of the General Assembly.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to, is there, is, could you point to...
I mean, I guess, maybe the motion would be to add as a priority...
It's part of the public safety, right?
Yes.
It's in the public safety tab, amendment to close gaps, no? Oh, yeah. So second one, amendments to close gaps around the use of marijuana, right? So are you making a motion to include that as part of...
I would like to add that for consideration, yes.
Is that, that's your motion?
Motion to add crackdown policies on, on the sales of THC products to minors.
So the second one, the amendment to close gaps around the use of marijuana as a legislative priority, right? That's what you're looking at?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Poe? Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Alene?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any other priorities?
Yes, I have one under the quality of life. I would like to make a motion for the expanded access to mental health and wellness services.
Is there a second to that motion? Dr. Farmer? Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Alene?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Others?
Opposition to mandatory collective bargaining.
We, we're not, if we are not voting on it, it means that's not part of a priority. So that's cities' thing, you know, they have given us the whole list of priorities they are supporting, and we are picking and choosing from them which ones we are supporting.
We do not want to have teachers with collective bargaining. We do not want that on our, on our financial...
But if you look at the context again, two, three years ago, it came for a vote through the Transportation Department for collective bargaining, and the board majority was not in their favor at that point in time. So, but this is not, right now, the, all list is not part of board LCS priorities. The ones we have voted on will be the only ones which will be part of LCS priorities. But we cannot tell city what to do.
I get that, but we're, we're adding things in.
Yeah, so you want to add something in there?
Yeah, said, well...
You wants to agree on that.
I want to agree on that.
Which one is that?
Opposition to mandatory collective bargaining.
Point me to a...
Agreeing with it.
On page five.
Quality of life, okay, I, I, I get it, now, sorry.
We're a right-to-work state, and this will take the right to work out.
Oh, I see. So it's there, okay. Are you making a motion to...
Making a motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Alene?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Other priorities to be included. So, Madam Clerk, would you be able to kindly send the, our legislative priorities, you are coordinating with the city hall, right? And so that way, we let them know what the school board has approved as our priorities? So we support the city council in those priorities, right? We adopted them as it is.
Yes. Do you want me to read over which ones they are?
Please do.
They're pretty good.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be sure. So what you're supporting is under lifelong learning, comprehensive pre-K and transitional kindergarten. The next one is full implementation and enhancement of the Virginia Literacy Act. The next is reevaluation of the standards of quality school funding formula. You have decided to table and revisit school choice funding, so that wouldn't be one that we would send over. Under public safety, the amendments to close gaps around the use of...
Workforce development.
Oh, workforce development, yes. And then, under public safety, amendments to close gaps around the use of marijuana. And I know Mr. Barron had added in about concerns about the sales of THC vapes to minors. And then, under quality of life, expanding access to mental health and wellness services, and opposition to mandatory collective bargaining.
Did I capture it?
Thank you. Next one is the school board member reports. Laurel, Mrs. Lowry?
Our next meeting is December 3rd.
Thank you. Academic Success Committee, Mrs. Lowry?
We're working on the AI policy still.
Rob School, Mrs. Lowry?
Okay, this one will be a little longer. All right, the board is announcing, the CVGS board is announcing new leadership, starting July 1st, 2026. Dr. Douglas has accepted the position. Mrs. Dora Purvis has stated she's the chair of the CVGS committee, or I mean, board. We are very excited to welcome Dr. Scott Douglas as the new CVGS director, starting on July 1st, 2026. Dr. Douglas has proven to our board that his qualifications fully encompass all that is expected as of a CVGS director. His leadership experience, community outreach efforts, budgeting and finance work, and teaching skills are exceptional. These experiences, combined with his successful grant writing, work with the CVGS Foundation, and the innovative ideas and vision for the future, make him the best candidate for the position. We look forward to Dr. Douglas caring on the tradition of excellence we have enjoyed in the Central Virginia Governor's School. Dr. Douglas brings over 25 years of educational experience to his new role, including 15 years of dedicated service to CVGS. And the last part I wanted to include was his, his own quote, and just him way, his way of saying, "Thank you, come on, computer." Let me see. There it is. He says, "I am honored by the board's confidence and excited to continue serving the CVGS community in this new capacity. CVGS has been the centerpiece of my professional career, and I look forward to building on the program's strong foundation. Our dedicated faculties and staff will continue to work with all our stakeholders as we achieve our mission to develop leaders and possess the research and technical skills, the global perspective, and the vision needed to address the challenges of a rapidly changing society."
Thank you. Next one is finance and facilities, Mr. DePaul?
The most important part about the change order has already been addressed. Thanks very much for that. Two points that didn't get addressed were about the metal detectors. Conversations with Mr. Caputo show this to be a program that is, under his direction, is going to be well managed, and it's not going to be a deterrent to getting through school, getting into school. It's not going to be that much of a difficult process, based on what they've been doing and what the research they have been conducting and experiencing in real-life situations. I think we're going to end up doing it a lot better than other schools, because Nick is, Nick is heading it, heading this up. The other thing is, our next meeting is going to be on the 18th, a week from today, and I'm encouraging everyone to get their priorities for the budget in, so that we can discuss them, and get, and get a lot of our, our focus going, so that we can create a, the budget that's going and get a lot of our focus going so that we can create the budget that's going to be necessary to make sure Lynchburg continues to improve.
Thank you. Next one is STEM Academy, Mr. Poe.
Yeah, sure, so we had a meeting earlier today, and there was actually quite a bit of information. They have their college success skills that took place, well, that will take place on November the 14th. They'll be holding mock interviews. They have about a total of 27 seniors that will be partaking in this. They'll be working with CBCC, they have about, they're going to have mentors and different things of that nature. And then on January 7th, they'll be engaging in internships with local businesses. October 17th was the end of midterms, and anyone with, that was below a 2.0, they had a mandatory meeting with parents. Of course, there was only a handful of students that was, that were found to be at a 2.0 or below, and most of the subject matter was math and physics. And if a student happens to be in this situation, they are required to gain additional tutoring and classes in those subjects. January 12th, the spring semester will begin. All of the fall semester grades will be reviewed, and each student must have a C or better in chemistry, math, biology, physics, and English. I spoke about internships. These internships that the seniors will be engaging in will be local companies that, everything from metric tonics to health services and cybersecurity. I also spoke about the mock interviews. These students will gain access to interviews from 20 different volunteers, and the volunteers are actually from local businesses and different industries. The questioning will take place for about 15 to 20 minutes, and then they'll also get feedback for about 15 to 20 minutes so they can engage in professional interviews. They've got to do the whole nine yards, come dressed to impress and all that, so. And from what I hear, the students have been pretty worked up about this. So this gives them a chance to be able to go through that process before they have to do it in the real world. On October 5th, 2026, at 6:00 PM, there will be in-person information sessions, and counselors will also be present. And this is about, you know, what all the STEM program has to offer for anybody that would be interested. Enrollment opportunities for, I think it's 10th grade. And I just wanted to concentrate on LCS, so EC Glass would be on January 8th, 2026, and Heritage would be on January 9th, 2026. The application process for 2026, 2027, you have to go online to the STEM website slash CVC website. Also, it's encouraged for students to speak with their parents and a counselor at their school, and apply outside of school because of the 2FA requirement online, and they can't have their cell phones in school, and I think it sends a 2FA code to their phones. Let's see, is there anything else? Lynchburg will have seven seats available coming up in the 2026, 27, but there's also three at-large seats, and they are looking for a total of 30 students. Their financial report, their current revenue is at $389,100. In Cumberston's, $110,635,000. Their year-to-date expenses were $64,282, and the available funds as of now, as of today, was $214,182.19. They also have fundraised a total of about $7,500 this year, as of today. There was a review of their priorities, and there was interesting part that was omitted, and that was the initiative to gain females and minorities into the program. They've dropped that and only want to concentrate on and make it more of a merit-based program. And our next meeting will be January 27th, 2026.
Thank you. Next one is.
Dr. DePaul. I need to, I got schooled here just a couple seconds ago. Dr. Majet got my learning on for me. I need to apologize to Travis. I thought it was Nick Caputo who was doing the ram, heading up all these things, and it ends up being our Mr. Marshall, and I apologize to you. I've only been talking to Nick Caputo, and he was wearing your laurels there for a while. Again, thank you very much for doing that. I think you guys work well together, and I'm really impressed with the work you're doing. I apologize for not including you in that, the accolades.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you. Next one is LACR, any members from LACR who have updates? I, Mr. Ali, or Dr. Farmer?
I want you to mark your calendars, please. Our partners in education breakfast on December 18th. Okay, mark your calendars. Now, the next part, Reverend Nigel and I are getting hits. We might be out of our ram of what we are servicing, okay? So you know if somebody asks me something, and if I can do it, I'm going to do it. So Robert S. Payne, counselor, wants to do 25 food boxes for his students or whoever. So I reached out to the nonprofits that owe me a favor, like you, Mr. DePaul, and you, Barron, and you owe me a favor. So I'll be hitting on different people to support Robert S. Payne in this project, okay? And I checked with my superintendent to make sure that I wasn't breaking any rules, and y'all weren't going to throw me off this board for doing what God would have me to do, because I'm going to obey him first, okay? So we're getting hits to help the community. I'm getting hits from students because they are complaining about the cornbread. I had to hear about this at the voters' league meeting. Wherever I am, they come to me with their concerns, and I'm going to always listen. But I know how far to go and who to bring it to, okay? Also, we're working with one church, one community, one voice, collecting coats, gloves, hats. So we're doing that for the homeless students. I have a lot of nonprofits who wants to get involved, and I told them I could not give them names. I can only give them the counselor's name and number for them to contact them about that. So if y'all see Reverend Nigel and out here, me out doing things, we are doing them for the student, the parent, and the community, okay? If I come to you and ask for a can of peas and string beans, please give it to me.
Thank you. Next one is Ed Foundation, Mr. DePaul and Mr. Jaleel.
No updates at this moment.
Thank you. Next one is Beacon of Hope, Mr. Barron and Mr. Poe.
Yes, sorry, I was on the wrong screen here. Beacon of Hope, of course, always has great things going on. As our student representative has already brought up, we had the Virginia College Application Week. In just one week, y'all buckle up for some numbers. LCS students earned over $1.1 million in scholarships from colleges and universities. And that's up from last year at about $938,000 that they were able to get in scholarship. That says something about our students, for one, but also says something about the work that Beacon of Hope is doing. So I think it's really important. 246 students received on-the-spot admissions to college, and almost $30,000 was saved in college application fees, including for my son. Thank you, Beacon of Hope, I appreciate that. EC Glass had their FAFSA night last week to help 30 families fill out the FAFSA form. Heritage High School will have their FAFSA night this Thursday, 5:30 to 7:00 PM. I encourage any families that would like to participate in that, make sure you mark your calendars. And then finally, today, Beacon of Hope continues their commitment to just career emphasis and took a group of eighth graders to Aerofin for exposure to companies and careers in that region. So, again, continue to do really great work. I'm really proud of our partnership with Beacon of Hope.
Thank you. Next one is Student Discipline Committee, Mr. Connor.
I don't have much to say. We have had so many active cases that we really haven't had a review. We're scheduled for one this Thursday, and the two members, other members have put in some requests of what specific information. But one of the things that we have learned or discovered is that, as Mr. Barron has shared, there's a serious problem with THC vapes in our schools right now. And we recommended, and we spoke to the superintendent, and I think she's working with the Communications Department to get signage throughout the middle schools and high schools about the dangers of THC vapes and the potential penalties if you come before the discipline committee and have been found with a THC vape. So that's a serious issue in our schools right now, and that's what the, just one of the things the discipline committee is trying to make sure that we make it right for all the students, but it's something that needs to be addressed on a serious basis. That's all I have.
Poe, you want to give your slogan for what you suggested? Go ahead, you've got five seconds, quickly.
Mr. Connor, he covered this base.
Your slogan for putting on that across the school district?
Hey, I don't really have one.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next one is Dr. Majet, superintendent comments.
All right, I will be brief. First, I do also want to take a moment to recognize Veterans Day. We are deeply grateful to all of those who've served and the families who continue to support them. Although we are still in November waiting for the final release of state data from the Department of Education, our schools are already, they're working through their preliminary results. And later this week, we plan to just take a deeper dive into that data as we review our processes and protocols to better understand our outcomes so we can make informed decisions to best support our students. In addition, this week as well, a central office leadership team will participate in Part II of our communication training, and this work for us is important because it'll help us continue building that right framework and the system so that we can streamline our overall processes here and better support the schools. So it's a work in progress, but we have to, we have to take care of home first and where we are here in central office and so that we can best support the schools. And then finally, a reminder, Lynchburg City Schools, Ms. Brown and her team will host a job fair this Saturday, November 15th, from 8:00 AM to noon at EC Glass High School Gymnasium. We welcome anyone who's interested in joining our team to attend that job fair and find out the opportunities that we have for you, all areas. I know Mr. Barron is saying, please come out and be willing to drive our babies, educators, teachers, bus drivers, whomever. You're welcoming everyone, correct, Ms. Brown?
Ma'am.
All right, and that's all my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is Board Chairman, we'll start with Mr. Poe.
Again, you know, happy to be here and, you know, be in a position to be able to serve the community. Offside, and one of the reasons that I'm here is a lot of my community activism. And so I'd like to talk about an initiative that hopefully we can partner with Lynchburg City Schools. I've spoke with the NAACP, and they are going, they've got actually, and I've got the okay to announce this. $25,000 grant to help with the achievement gap. And with, you know, Coalition and some of my other initiatives outside, we're going to be asking the community to help us engage with tutoring and different things of that nature. I'm assuming, I think SOLs are more in the spring or so, so hopefully at the first of the year, we'll be able to put that together, and I imagine that looks like maybe offering some help on Saturdays to local families and different things of that nature. Also wanting to lean on our faith-based institutions to also help because they have, you know, a lot of the different facilities in the community and different things of that nature. And, you know, as we've all said, you know, and one thing that I advocate for is, it's not just Lynchburg City Schools' problem, it's a community problem, and we're in this together, so. But we would like to help with some data and pinpoint the students that need the help the most. I know Dr. Gupta says we're in the business of education, and so I'm doing all I can outside of my board membership, but also as a citizen, by pulling together as many resources and people and organizations so we can combat this together. So just wanted to put that out there, that's coming down the pipeline. We touched on the vape situation, and I really, it's not just the marijuana vape. If you talk to some of the administration at different schools, also the tobacco-based vape, you know, to see, you know, what some of the vapes look like, they attract students, different things of that nature. And I know that's probably not going to be in our wheelhouse because, you know, maybe more stringent federal laws, and there are federal laws. I remember when there used to be Joe Camel, who was a cartoon character and different things, and it appealed to youth. But a lot of these vapes, to me and to my eyes, appeal to the youth. There's a whole danger that comes along with that, and if we're going to talk about the fact that when they come before the disciplinary committee, they are facing, because of Department of Education regulations, certain minimums of time of out of school where they can't get the education that they need because they made a bad choice. And I find that highly problematic, and to see kids shoot themselves in the foot is heartbreaking. So, you know, that's all I have. I just want to let everybody know that the community is behind Lynchburg City Schools and do all I can to see what we can do to move forward.
Thank you. Dr. Farmer?
I just want to thank y'all for allowing me to be a part of this team. And I also would like to thank each and every one of you, because I know y'all are going to support me in these projects with the schools and the parents and the community. So the next time you see me, bring me a can of corn, can of peas.
Yes, ma'am.
Get a box out here so that we can support Robert S. Payne, okay? And I thank y'all.
Thank you. Mr. DePaul?
Just a big thank you to all the veterans that have allowed us the blessings and the ability to come to a place like this and do the work that we are attempting to do, and all the people that benefit from it, and all the ones that, the freedom of choice not to benefit from it. So a big thank you to veterans.
Thank you. Mr. Connor?
I've already.
Mrs. Lowery?
I'm enjoying visiting the schools and saying hello to the teachers. And I finished reading to all of them for the semester, and I'm back at tutoring at Paul Monroe. I saw Legacy at Heritage High School encouraging students in their CTE choices. And I've also seen vape posters in the schools, you know, and it pretty much says, "This looks inviting. You don't want it," you know, try to stay away from it. So the schools are trying to advocate for the same thing. I want to say thank you to, I said thank you to three of my family members who are veterans as I grew up military. And I hope everyone traveling for Thanksgiving is safe and all to have a wonderful Thanksgiving break.
I want to thank you all as well for our time together. It's a wonderful thing to be able to help these young people. And again, I go back to this holistic approach, you know, not only the board members, the school, but also the community at large, especially faith-based churches and so on. And this year, I've stepped in to make a little bit of a, you know, sort of improvement to maybe what's going down with some of the kids, create a little after-school program, trying to help the kids. And it's amazing to see what has already been done with these kids, just working together, coming in from school, and then we have a chance to work with them for another couple of hours. And so we're trying to be a support system for them as well. I'm hoping this year, when Christmas comes in, we'll be able to extend some things to help them as well. Now, with toys and gifts and so on. Some of the parents not able to provide a lot of these things, and that's another way to support it. Summertime, we want to transition into helping them with summer programs and so forth. So those are some things outside of the ram, but what has already been done or being done that we would like to be able to continue to foster.
Thank you. Ben?
I also want to just continue to echo gratitude for our veterans, especially those that work in LCS. I mean, you have people that gave their service to our country and now continue to do so by educating our children, so I'm very grateful for those. And you guys know I've got just three things. By now, you should know my three Ts. First being trust, and I love, Ms. Lowery goes around to different schools. I know several members here go to different schools, and I think it's a really great way to build trust is just to be present. And I just want to say this, I've met so many just incredible teachers, administrators, staff. And I just want to say this, I've met so many just incredible teachers, administrators, staff members who are so passionate about what they do. And you get a lot of negative PR a lot of times pretty easily, but the positive PR sometimes lags behind. One of my favorite things that I see at multiple elementary schools in particular is our janitorial staff is very involved with the kids and loves working with the kids. Like, that's so cool, y'all, like, these are elite-level people. So I just want to, I want to state that as we continue to move forward, man. Continue to communicate, continue to participate, and I think you're going to meet some really incredible people that give their all to these kids. And second is transition. I'm really excited, looking forward to beginning our strategic planning process. And I just want to put this out for public, just a public record. There is a heavy, we were very adamant as a committee, as part of the RFP Committee, about big engagement of the community. We want to know what our community really thinks and wants and longs for in our school system. If you're part of the process, they're going to reach out and engage the community. Please participate. If you're a parent, if you're a community member, a business owner, whatever you are, participate in the surveys they put out, participate in any kind of public forums that they do. The strategic plan that we make is only as good as the information that we have. And so it's just really important for community to be involved in this process, and I think it can be a really good thing. And last, certainly not least, transportation. I do want to continue to advocate for higher pay for bus drivers and especially for sub-bus drivers. I'm learning and talking to my friends over the transportation department that they're getting like $14 an hour to sub a route. And that's just, that's pitiful, y'all. That's something we've got to be able to do better. And I will say this about that team, like, no one, no one works harder. And so we have people that work as hard, but no one works harder than our transportation team. They get a lot of flack because there's so many logistical things and so many things that to troubleshoot and figure out. And they're working in a high-stress environment, it's difficult, it's tough. But they're the first to show up and the last to leave most days. I know Mr. Connor will attest to this. And so I just want to shout them out, and again, show up at the job fair. We need more drivers. By the way, we pay for training. You get your CDL training paid for. And so that's a huge incentive, I don't think I've mentioned before, to anyone who's listening. And it's a flexible schedule. You don't have to drive every morning and every afternoon. If you can give us three afternoons a week, that's three afternoons we have better, safer situation for transporting our students. So just want to, again, reiterate the importance of transportation and how it touches so many things across the school districts.
Thank you. And I think on behalf of Board, we can say happy Thanksgiving, as Mrs. Lowry said. Thank you for all the staff, faculty, students, especially faculty and staff. You work day in, day out to make a difference in lives of our kids. So thank you, thank you, thank you very much. We'll not meet before Thanksgiving, so this is the Thanksgiving meeting. We'll have turkey afterwards in terms of informational items. Next Board Work Session is December 2nd. Finance and Facilities Meeting here is listed December 9th at 3:30, but there is a special call-in meeting of Finance and Facilities on November 18th at 3:30 PM. On top of that one, next School Board Meeting is on December 16th at 5:00 PM. LACR is on December 16th at 3:30. Discipline Committee is December 11th at 3:30. And Academic Success Committee is to be determined.
It'll be December 16th at 3:30 to 4:00, it'll be shortened.
December 16th from 3:30 to 4:00. Nothing else, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.